Engagement spaces set up. I think what I'll do is I'm gonna try to run that Pierce County Leadership Program, since we're gonna do this event every June, to make it end in June, and then have those kids, those people participate in that conference as kind of the, the end of the, um, the end of that experience. So that should be nice for them. Uh, on the community building, so we have all of our architectural renderings done, we have everything ready to go. I'm gonna pull the steering committee together here in the next month, just to see if they wanna move forward. We kind of hit a stall with the floods and everything that happened, um, but, you know, the next step is obviously the capital campaign. So, seeing what happens there. Vizel AI, this is that computerized artificial intelligence program that we use to identify new industry and businesses for our area. Uh, all of the collaborative partners that we have, Norfolk, Wayne, Fremont, Columbus, Boone County, um, we have all completed the training, the onboard training. That took about three months, in-depth program. So now the conversations are started about how do we strategically plan and work together to start attracting some area businesses to northeast Nebraska. We're working as a region, not as individual area. So that is kind of exciting to see. Norfolk has targeted, uh, one industry, and now, um, me and, um, Boone, we're gonna be seeing if we can attract the suppliers to try and make it a package deal. Um, those things don't happen fast, but it's kind of nice to see that those things are coming along, and that that program is starting to reap some benefits for us. On the RBDG program, we have two applications that are out. Um, and one, where the business owner is, is a little bit on the fence, but he has filled out the information. But hopefully, we can get those things going in the next month. One of them is for one of our area businesses that we're gonna be transitioning, um, here in the next couple of months. So, that'll be a pretty decent-sized loan. If we had our IRP program, we would've made a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar loan out of it for this, and we would've been done by now, whereas we're, because we're having to go through SBA financing and doing a do- a number of different things to put a financial package together, it's really kind of slowed the process down. Um, we'll talk about the IRP later, though. LV eight forty, I did email them today, just letting them know that I need to pull them together here in August, first, second week of August, to either do an RBDG or an LV eight forty loan for this business. Um, on the back-to-school barbecue, this is for Courtney. There are prizes left over from the, from the carnival, from Klein, who has six boxes of prizes in the Girl Scout house. So if you would like to use that for the back-to-school barbecue, please do, 'cause I have no idea what to do with it.
Couple months ago, there was one that we were finalists for, something along with the railroad, and, you know, anything that...
Yeah, we were finalists for a fertilizer company that would bring in about fifteen to twenty employees. What happened was that fertilizer company went and just bought their own piece of land, and they, it was a partnership with the Nebraska Department of Economic Development. They ditched DED, and they went and did their own thing, which, we were part of the DED thing, so.
Exactly.
Um, but I've talked to Larry Schaefer, um, and, you know, we're, he's interested in doing something with that land, so we're coming up with some ideas.
Thank you.
Thanks.
City Superintendent Kurt?
We had, uh, we met with FEMA, JEO, Rollwater. FEMA will be there Thursday for the second go-around. Uh, Randy will be here tomorrow morning. Remember that. The rate study will finalize that tomorrow.
About ten.
Nine. Yeah, he left me a voicemail today.
Okay.
Uh, we had the back truck that brought that up. We demoed it, looks good, everything works good. Uh, we've been demoing the street sweeper, but a little out of our budget, but...
No door.
Uh, park kids have been doing great, pool's been running good, so...
What's taking place in Schindler's Park for it all? Censed off with the snow fence.
The, over here?
Banjo?
Volleyball, the new volleyball court.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, we'll be working on that, hopefully. Get that all going together, and, I don't know, when are we supposed to be done with that?
Supposed to be in the winter.
Hopefully by the end of the summer.
Before school starts.
Yeah.
Were you on top of the school today?
No.
Who else?
I don't know, they're doing a lot of, they're doing a lot of work over there.
What?
They're doing a lot of work over there. No, I was up on the west street, digging curb stuff, so...
You do a really nice job with that curb, you're there. I don't know where you learned that, but it's really good.
Yeah. We'll try to keep it up. There you go. Uh, I don't know, that's, I think, uh, I guess you guys are gonna decide on the back truck later on, so, uh...
How was the street sweeper? Did you have that too, that day?
Yeah, that was a brand-new one, though, but I'm thinking that's a little out of our budget right now, so... But, what'd he say, two-hundred and, two-hundred and eighty?
Two-hundred thousand. For the brand-new one.
Yeah.
How many streets did we get done while it was here?
Right. I mean, it did a good job, but I don't think we can swing that, so... But, other than that, I don't think I have anything.
Thanks, Kurt.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Yep.
Mike? Differe to the end, or no?
Well, I might as well do it now.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
We'll have enough to discuss at the end. Kurt mentioned a few things that are going on. Uh, one, FEMA, to let you know where we're at. The damage that the March thirteenth water did to a lot of the dirt roads was softened and actually took away some of the base. FEMA's well aware of that, and, uh, we put in for two-hundred and fifty thousand for road repair back in, um, well, it was March thirteenth. By April, we'd already put in the request. So you can see FEMA's moving a little bit slowly. Um, they're still working on a, a few things and getting their glitches, but they've hired a few more people, and I think we're in the process right now, in a thirty-day window. I think we'll get some. Uh, I don't know how much. I mean, there's a lot of strings when it comes to FEMA money, and what they consider repair, what they consider normal maintenance, what they, you know, don't, um, consider to be part of the disaster. So, Woodland will be looked at closely, Culverts will be looked at closely. Um, we also had some pumps that we used to, as we've talked about in the council, uh, we burned out a couple pumps, uh, making sure that the city during that forty-eight to seventy-two hour period had both drinking water and, uh, lack of sewage. You know, we had enough the way it was, so we had four pumps going at once, just to stay ahead of it, and barely did that, so...
Oops. Wrong door. Sorry.
Uh, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, um, today I was in a meeting with the Lower Elkhorn NRD, as well as with FEMA representatives, and they suggested that this information get out as quickly as possible, is the re-mapping of the floodplains for the city of Plainview, as well as all of northeast Nebraska. We had our kickoff meeting back in September, way prior to even the flooding conditions. Currently, we have one house that sits within a floodplain in, um, Plainview. Whether or not they have flood insurance, I, I don't know, that's up to them. I will tell you that, looking at the new maps that appear to be going in about two-thousand and twenty-three, it's a few years down the road, but we have about fifty to sixty homes that'll be in the new floodplain. And that includes not only the houses on the south, but also the ones that, uh, where the people talk about, where there was an old lake up in the middle of town, that's now in the floodplain. And up to the north, if you come down by Nord Johnson's Land and all that water that flew, that came into the Banshell Park, that's part of, uh, the new floodplain. And, uh, there's no doubt that the insurance companies and the loan and the bankers are gonna wanna know this. The last time a firm map was done, and the one they're still going by, from now until two-thousand and twenty-three, was done in nineteen-seventy-seven. So with this new information, um, there's gonna be a lot of changes, and there's gonna be a lot of, um, squawking, but on the other hand, you're able to get it, and it's gonna be, um, choice there. Banking institutions, though, when you start to sell homes and, and redo and get, uh, housing loans of that nature, are gonna insist on flood insurance. So there's gonna be some, um, major changes. And I know it's at least between fifty and sixty, and maybe more, so... Talking about the other things that are going on, I'm gonna knock out one for you on number six. If you would allow me, Mr. President.
Sure.
I will, uh, we have GIS mapping going on right now. All of the water and sewer lines in the, uh, city will now be finalized this summer. JEO will be doing that project. We were given a ten-thousand-dollar grant to go ahead and, uh, finish that up. So that'll be nice to have. All of our water sewer lines will then be marked and tagged, and then electronically, we'll be able to pull up wherever we need to go and, and take a look at it, rather than, um, witching and other things that Kurt is getting so good at. But it'll be nice to join the twenty-first century in, in that regard, so... Uh, trying to think of anything else in major. You have any questions going on? I think the staff-wise, we're gonna be going into budget season, and we've got all that taken care of, but staff-wise, I mean, I think Kurt and, uh, the guys have kept up admirably. I think Troy's done a terrific job out there with the streets. We constantly hear, um, some of the negativity. That's okay. I mean, um, we, we can kind of get used to that, as long as we see that progress is being made. Uh, Courtney ordered some garbage cans, Bob. If you haven't already seen them, you'll know that they're out there and planted. So, um, yeah, it's a little nice touch...
Yeah.
...for downtown to kind of have that taken care of, so... Uh, did go out to Scotts Bluff, uh, for the, uh, NCMA meeting, and I was put on in the, uh, Administrator's Board. I am now the president-elect, who'll go in as president of the Nebraska City Managers and Administrators next year, so... That was, uh, one of the highlights out there, although in Scotts Bluff, I went, uh, to leave the morning of, and it was forty-eight degrees, so, uh, big change, so... Any other questions?
Employee evaluations, will those be...
Employee evaluations, but make it very clear, employee evaluations have to stay in the city office, but you're more than welcome to come down and see them at any time. Valuation scores will come out in the, um, uh, most of the, at least ours are already done, the Courtney and mine, and I think, uh, Kurt will be working on them probably in the next month, so...
Okay.
And that's the only ones that I'll have, under my control. It would be Courtney and, uh, Kurt and myself and anybody within the administrative and, uh, maintenance staff, so...
Will we be notified when they're done, so we can, when they're all done?
You want it when they're all done. Yeah, sure, I can do that. Um, like I said, I can tell you they're probably half-done right now, so... And then anything, anything else I join in on, I mean, I've got lots of discussion about different things on the agenda, so...
Thank you. Number five is tabled until next month. Number seven, Donna, Library Innovation Micro Studio Makerspace Equipment.
We are part of the Innovation Studio through the Library Commission, so part of that is makerspaces, and starting Wednesday, July seventeenth through September twenty-second, we'll have these equipment here. We'll have a heat press with printers. They're specialized printers for the heat press, so you can print on aprons, shirts, koozies, mousepads, all different kind of materials. We'll also get a vinyl cutter, a CNC router, and a button maker. And then our second shift will be in September twenty-third through December eighth, which will be a laser cutter, a camera, a laminator, and some other fun things for kids. From Monday, December ninth through February twenty-fourth, we'll get a 3D printer, embroidery sewing machine, and some audio Legos Mindstorms, and some other Lego projects. So what I'm going to have here for first, we'll have an open house in August, but starting July twenty-second, we'll have, anybody that wants to come can come to the library and check out the material. There'll be special training for some of the proj- for some of the equipment, so you'll have to send hours of training before you can use the equipment, and you may have any questions.
I just heard at the school board meeting last night that the principals are gonna try to get with you and get some classes over here, so...
Yep, we're working with the school to get some of the classes there. We're working with the Pierce County Extension with the four-H programs to get some of the four-H clubs to come in, to look at the equipment and use it. So it's open to all ages. If you have kids, they'll have to have a parent or some adult with them to in order to use the equipment. So, look for the paper. We'll have our open house in August sometime. But please come and check out what we have.
I believe we should have the people that do the library's insurance see the list of what you're going to do.
Okay.
Have some idea that that is all covered.
Okay.
Somewhat different than handing people a book.
Yeah. Yeah, they have to sign a waiver form when they use it, but, yeah. So we'll do that. And who else?
Do you wanna invite people for your event on Friday, while you're here?
Oh, the Dr. Oxygen? Yeah, if you're available, at nine-thirty on Friday, Dr. Oxygen will be doing a program. He's a scientist that we have coming for our summer reading program.
Thank you.
Thanks, Donna.
Thanks.
Number eight, Discussion Community Back-to-School Barbecue, August sixteenth. Is it Courtney or...
I'm gonna leave this one in Courtney's hands. She's done a wonderful job, and she started last year, and she'll tell you about this shift.
Um, last year we just did, I kinda, we kinda planned it in about two weeks, but we did free hot dogs for anybody that wanted to come. I think we had about a hundred and fifty people that showed up. Um, this year we're trying to make it a little bit bigger. Um, I sent out letters to all the businesses in town, asking them if they would like to donate or help participate. They're more than welcome to. Uh, I've already received some donations. Um, we're planning on, Susan said we have prizes left over, so we'll have prizes for the kids. Um, I'm kind of wanting to do a smore station in the fire pit. Um, someone's already asked me about that, and I think they're gonna take care of it, so, um, if anybody wants to help, they're more than welcome to. It's open to the entire community. It's just kind of a fun night out for everybody in the park, no charge, so that's basically it. So, hopefully it's nice weather, and it's the Friday after school starts. Um, the school's already aware of it, so they will announce the kids that it is happening on Friday, so...
It's until first.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Five to seven.
Number nine, Discussion Action Resolution Number five-eight-four, purchase of sewer vac truck.
Get the top one down to Courtney here, and grab one of the lower copies just to look at. And they're just, uh, the basic standard resolution we've always used, go ahead and buy this thing, and we, your thought was just out of general municipal funds, right? No specific authority to borrow money? That's what I had on my notes, and that's all you got.
Okay. I have to look at the treasurer and then, you know, I would...
I see that. I think she's the one that told me general fund, so I hope we're okay. And if that's a, I think that's the correct description of your unit. That con from the clean equipment, thirty-five thousand. We didn't address the question of trade-in. Are you still talking with them, or what's going on there?
Kurt, did you want the last... I think we're gonna hang on to that for now, and...
It's not.
We do. We will, uh, put it out for ten, and sell ourselves.
Hey? Well, that's just a single motion passed, if you're ready to do that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number five-eight-four, purchase of the vac con.
I'll second.
Second by Bob. Pam?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next one, number ten, Discussion Action Resolution Number five-eight-five, handicap parking for the community housing.
Yeah, I don't know if you wanna speak to it, Kareen, we've got a, the fourplex...
You have a little map, isn't it wonderful? Did you give them that?
It's a lovely map. I don't know that we gave it to them. They wouldn't look at it if we didn't.
I would look at it.
Okay, maybe you'd look at it. Lovely map.
The fourplex people from the F-H-A...
USDA.
USDA in Norfolk have been hounding us, the fourplex board, and recently Kareen as the manager, to get a handicap parking space designated in front of the fourplex. And that's what this would propose to do, to put a parallel parking handicap space on the north side of the fourplex, right up against Main Street. I wanna hand that down. To get a description without measuring it, Kareen, and for the rest of you, I wrote it as "parallel parking on the south side of Pilcher, in the first parking space west of Main Street, parallel to the lot." Describes the lot. And Mike, if the city guys go to paint it, well, you, you just have to look up how long is it supposed to be, and get the setback, and make a parking space. I didn't attempt to say how many feet from the intersection or whatever, but the first viable space right there west of Main Street is where you'd put it.
Do they wanna look at the map?
I would like to look at it.
Sure, here's a copy of the map. What do you got?
I only have mine. I get, you're supposed to make copies.
I heard about that. But I don't think it happened. There was a little matter of seven-hundred and fifty.
I know, I don't, you know, you... I'll just, you want me to just continue on here?
Sure.
I didn't even know you're the manager. Congratulations.
Well, thank you.
If you just keep quiet, they'll pass it in fourteen seconds, but if you wanna talk, go ahead.
I want them to be completely clear about why we want it on Pilcher, not Main, 'cause we have given some thought. First of all, I think that you would not like it, 'cause there's a steep hill that you'd have to deal with on Main, not on Pilcher. And I think the Congregational Church would use it more as parking if they're, if they park all the way down to there. And for some reason, even though it is not painted or parallel or parall- uh, um, angle parking, people park parallel on Pilcher. For some reason, they just do. It's not very accurate on that one, so if I was disabled, I would not want to get out on a busy street. And the curb is right there, as you can see, so you should just go right up there. That's right. So there. Should be no other discussion.
I like the new sidewalks also.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, the new sidewalk's gonna come right down to it, so that'll make it all work pretty good.
There's also more school traffic on Main Street, here ballgames and that, so...
I'll make a motion that we pass Resolution five-eight-five for the handicap parking community housing.
I'll second.
I'll give the tie to Pam. Julie?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
It's only been twenty-five years, so good job.
I, I should make, uh, mention that in order for this to be processed, Diane should remember this wherever she's at quite well, as a painted parking spot is not good enough.
Didn't do it, but they're simple.
So we'll need to get a post and a handicap parking in order to be official. You might as well think that the painted one is just kind of a, a warning.
Well, you guys do logistics, 'cause I didn't know why you were supposed to ask in the first place, so go ahead and continue on.
So, and I don't know, Kurt, if we got some extra, uh, handicap parking ground?
We don't want it.
Yeah.
Do I, do case for that? City or...
Just, we'll absorb, we'll absorb what...
Talking.
It passed. That's all you have? Number eleven, Discussion Action, MEAN refund and percentage for NCPPD reserve fund for rate stabilization.
One of the, um, a couple of jobs I do is I'm also on the Board of Directors for MEAN, our power company. NCPPD leases out, we know how that works, we've gone over this whole thing, but we are still owners of the, um, power that comes in from MEAN as our wholesaler. So, when I went down in May to attend the meeting, they had a surplus that was put in and charged to the communities to make sure that their rates were stable. And with that being in mind, it was approximately eleven-point-six million. Now, they'll put X amount back in, which is one-point-six million, um, to their rate stabilization for the wholesale, but in the meantime, each community was given back ten million dollars. So, and I was there, I actually helped making the motion to, um, bring that money back to us in the tune of sixty-two thousand and ninety-five dollars. We have received that check. However, in all fairness, and the reason you have it on here, and I have spoken with North Central and Keith Harvey and Doyle as well, and the easiest way to take care of this is, they started their contract in December.
Right.
And it runs through April, so it's, uh, four months. It's exactly one-third. So what I'm asking as a recommendation is exactly thirty-three percent, within a few cents. Give a check for twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two, which will go to NCPPD, because they were in charge of the system at that time, as well as, you know, the billing. So that money, they've already indicated that they were gonna put it into their rate stabilization. Most all-power districts and power companies do that, so that you have a little in rainy day funds. So it's only benefiting us, as customers, uh, by giving this back to them. The other forty thousand that came back to the city as part of that was, um, funds that go into the general for offsetting any taxpayer expenditures, anything you might do, the sewer vac truck, it doesn't really matter, those will help take that out, uh, of that cost, so you're not really, um, in my mind, you're not losing anything. You got this surplus money, you're not having to borrow or go after any kind of that money. But I do think, and my recommendation is the council, um, to, to go ahead and make a motion to refund back to North Central Public Power twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars, um, to be used for the rate stabilization for North Central Public Power. And Mike, what does that mean, rate stabilization for, I mean, what, what, the money does what? You want, you, I, I can try, you want...
Sure. Municipal Energy Agency of Nebraska.
Correct.
And that was the outfit Plainview contracted with twenty years ago to buy a lot of the power. Not every bit, but most of the electricity. So when we've now hired NCPPD to run the system and send the bills, they, to keep Plainview from breaking their contract with MEAN, are working with MEAN and getting a good part of the power through them. Actually, now, it's not exactly a big advantage. They can get some power elsewhere, better, cheaper. But the contract is what it is, and it's fifteen, twenty years old, it's gotta run its course. So now they've somehow squeezed a little money back out of the system, and I don't, I wasn't at the meetings, I don't know the details of what that money is, but because we've been paying them for this long time, and they somehow overcharged something, there's a refund to be had, and that's where it's coming from.
Yeah, MEAN had gone through some, uh, stiff years in the past, and we've even had to pay what was called a Rita, uh, a payment, you know, and that was extra money above and beyond, because they were short. So we've had this happen, you know, before, but now with the NCPPD, if they're short, they all go to NCPPD. We no longer have that control. But during the time that this happened, uh, the city had sixty-six percent of the time of the rates and the billing, and the other third of the time was North Central Public Power. So that's where it kind of stands. It was unusual that Keith and the powers that be in North Central, they're a tight-knit group, they already knew about this coming before the Board of Directors even did, which was kind of, their attorney then called, um, called me as the board manager and just simply said, "We don't deal with," and this is the contract that Bruce was involved with, "we don't deal with North Central Public Power, we still deal with the owner of the system, and that is the city of Plainview." So they gave the whole check back to us, and then said, "You do as you see is fit." And I did the numbers and ran it for the last five years, and it, not only is it right at thirty-three percent every year, it's almost to the penny. So that's why I come up for that amount, not just because of the months.
So we'd like to give her twenty-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars from our check to North Central Public Power District in Creighton. Is there a motion?
I have one more question.
Oh, sure.
So this, this money, is it going to a co-op for electricity, or just for Plainview? Just for Plainview. It's Plain, Plainview has a separate rate. They blend it with North Central Public Power, but if you ever look at your, or even go on the website, which a lot of you do now, I think to pay your rates, you'll see what's called a Plainview rate. And it's actually favorable. It's, it's, we are more favorable than the rest of the NCPPD rate payers. Not by a whole lot, but you can see where it's coming out. Technically, this is their money. I, I, that's why I'm asking, I wouldn't just do it out of, I love to be benevolent, but of, I love to be benevolent, but it's not because of that. Technically, it is theirs.
This is not the first time Mean has made these kind of adjustments. Four or five years ago, they got burned on the wrong end of one of these. They had been underpaying somebody out in Wyoming or something like that that was shipping power to us from a different region, and they ended up sued and had to pay quite a bit more, and they sent us a bill. Plainview had to cough up quite a bit, forty, fifty thousand. But all of those adjustments are part of the deal with their contract. If they make a mistake in their math, they settle it up. So that's what they're doing here.
Correct.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we send thirty-three percent, two thou, twenty thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars back to NCPPD.
Second?
Second.
Second, I'll win, voting Pam?
Aye.
Myself, aye, Julie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Motion passes. Number?
Just, just here, I mean, I will go on, but anybody wants to see, these are the board minutes from the Mean meeting that I attended, and I highlighted in green. It just, it's more FYI. It's not really anything having to do with the motion as we described here, but you can see where the, the surplus and the one point six million.
Do you want to see that, Bob?
Yeah. Yeah. Starts out there.
Okay. Number twelve, discussion action, gap paving of city streets. And I'm gonna speculate that's why most of you are here this evening. So I will turn the floor over to Mr. Holton to explain exactly what gap paving is.
Well, as I warned you and told you six months ago, if you are to pursue gap paving, which is always a good thing to do, be prepared because they come out of the woodwork and rightfully so. Everybody has a vested interest in where it goes. So what, upon your request, what I ask to kind of put numbers to it is have the engineer, Miller and Associates, come up and actually take a look at the gap paving as well as some other areas, including the, the road between the ball field and the football field. And that's a sizable, you know, project. So if I go to it, so you understand a little bit more, there's a map on each one of these. This is just the initial, for those that are here on paving, this is just the initial information. The things that you do need to know about this information is this is not like district paving. You do not have to have a district. Gap paving is between two streets that are paved. That's why they call it gap. And most of these run east and west. That is not up for a hearing or a debate. You know, it could, obviously, you've got people here. That's what you want it to be heard and, you know, your side of the story. But for the council's recognition, and this comes from the bond company, if you choose you want to do this, you simply have the authority and the power to do it. Okay? There's no seventy-five percent rule or of that nature. The only other one that was added on here was Fourth Street, and that one's immaterial because that's still a district. So once it was passed as a district, it will always remain a district, and it's just simply in your packet to kind of see what that cost would be. If you look at the, the way this is determined and you go through it, each one of these descriptions here will tell you, especially on the backside of the gap paving plan. So if you were to look at Lincoln Avenue, Main Street to First Street, and you see a cost of two hundred and seventy-two thousand and twenty-five cents, or twenty-five dollars and thirty-four cents, that's all based on linear feet. Okay? And that's your foot marker in front of your property. So when you go look at the county and what you have for a lot size, and let's say it's a hundred and fifty feet long, you would be per linear foot, and most of the time, if we remember the last time we went through this, it was right at eighty-five to a hundred and thirty-five per linear foot. And that was back then. Now, costs have, you know, starting to go up again, and I think Mike Knapperstock in that forewarned everyone that that's the case. It's not going to go down. Paving will never go down. So if your interest is in paving, if you look at the linear feet, you're looking at something like on the very first one, a hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents a foot. And that's Lincoln Avenue from Main Street to First Street. I won't go on all these because I can get this for anybody that wants them, but on the backside of each one of these, you'll see kind of a map. And it still remains, I will tell you, even though these are high-end, there's a difference between an engineer's figures and the actual figures that come in. And this is including the engineer cost as well as the ten percent contingency that they throw into in case something should go wrong. You'll notice that when we bid these out the last time, that they came in substantially lower, and the council at that time chose to offset some of the cost from the city, you know, no matter how it came out. And everyone was a different project and had a different cost. So if someone like by the Legion was two hundred dollars a linear foot, I think you brought it down to what everybody else was paying, which was eighty-five to a hundred dollars a foot. So that's where the map on your one and six-year plan, it never changes. It's always there. So for your information is to know the gap paving, the one that I know that is in most interest to get going, and I think they're all of interest, is the street between the hospital and our poor Mr. Kurt Hart down here. So that's twenty-eight thousand saved for Kurt. You know, and there's two different ways you can do this. When you look at it, it can be spread out over the typical, and this is where everybody gets it wrong, and I'm just trying to clarify, the typical is ten years. You spread out over ten years. We allowed the last time around to go fifteen, and you certainly can. The bonding company does not look upon that adversely.
That was the one we did on Ninth Street, wasn't it?
Well, not only the one on Ninth Street, but even the one on behind, we did for the fifteen-year for Family Dollar, West Street, all of them.
Yeah.
You know, some decided to pay off the assessment. It's, it's more or less of where or what you want to do with these streets. Some of these gaps have been there for so long that, and this, this flood, I will tell you, March thirteenth took its toll on some of those dirt roads. So, you know, we look at these, do you want to take care of the gap paving? You know, there's a lot of people involved. I had looked up all the homeowners. Some of them are here tonight, so they're looking at it, but it is what it is. So when you look at these, I'll pick on Patricia Fleschner, you're looking at a hundred and forty-two feet. That doesn't lie, but when you look at the cost of it at right around a hundred and ninety dollars a linear foot, that's pretty expensive. You know, and that may be on the high side. So you have some choices to make, not only whether you're going to do them, but you also have to take a look at what is the city's portion of it. You have two arguments. Some people say, "Well, the city should just pay for it." No. There's a lot of concrete streets that have been paved in this city that have been paid for by owners that live on them. That is probably the incorrect way to go. If you want to do cost share and some things like that, yes. And you could bring it down to the needs of what the people can handle and, you know, what the value of, on the house is going to be and all of those things. You know, it is something that you just want to consider. I, I, I'm the messenger. I, I, I brought this to you because this is what you wanted. I, I, I have no particular interest. Do I think a paved street's better? Yes. I mean, certainly when it comes to snow removal and anything, the city, I, I would be a bad city administrator if I didn't say I would like to have the whole city paved. But I also know there's a cost involved. One particular one that's involved and two, and I just absolutely, I think I got goose pimples all over when I saw it, is when I looked at the double-edged sword of stone back here sitting behind me, because all of a sudden, it's no longer just one frontage. It's, it's eighty-some thousand on one side and almost thirty thousand on the other side. Those are the things that you probably need to take, you know, into the light of it all. Fourth Street eventually is going to happen. There's no doubt in my mind that it's going to happen sometime, somewhere. Whether we're alive or not, I don't know. But it's, it's inevitable that the development's going that way. So, but I would hate to see anyone get hit with a double edge. So.
Clarify a couple of things before you go on, Mike.
Sure.
I don't know if you talked to the, to the bonding company people about this yet?
Yeah, I did.
Well, you said no district. I mean, if we're going to bond it, they have to do a district. I think the distinction is whether or not the property owners can petition against it.
Right.
I mean, if you're going to bond it and assess it, you still have to have a district.
Well, John told me that in, on gap paving, that you do not need a district.
Okay, well, I want to talk to John about that.
So that's.
But if you're going to assess it, you have to set it up through them. We're going to bond it, aren't we? I mean, we don't have a million dollars to do this.
No, no, and we do not.
So I guess I would still call it a district. Perhaps he chooses to not. But it is not subject to the same, if it qualifies, and every tract has to be looked at specifically.
Correct.
But if it qualifies as a gap paving location, then the business that fifty percent of the property owners can object and stop it does not apply.
Correct.
So that's the, the difference with the gap paving qualification. I mean, at that point, if three-fourths of the council chooses to go forward, then you can just do it. There is no procedure for objection if it qualifies as a gap paving project. And they'd all have to be drawn out. The bonding companies want to see paving on both ends and connection and so on. But odds are, it all does qualify. I think the engineers kind of know what they're doing there.
Right.
You know, it has to connect by paving to some other major street, but all of them do if they hit paving on both ends somehow. And then the other issue, as you mentioned, is, you know, the district, I guess that's a matter of definition. The bonding's going to have to happen anyway, so the bonding company'd have to be involved if you choose to go forward. But that, they, they have to be involved early to set up the procedure and be sure they're comfortable with doing their municipal bonds. Then you bid it, then you accept or reject bids, then you build it, then you assess it. So only after it is built and paid for do you know exactly what the cost is. And then you've got to decide how much can the city stand and how much is going to get assessed for the benefit to the adjoining property. And that's really where things hit the fan, when you've got to come around to the question of how much are you going to assess. I mean, if you recall, some of you were on, you, you gave the Legion Club folks a break, for instance, on the theory that, well, that's a major street coming in and out of town, and it's not just their benefit. And so, I don't know, the city picked up half.
We picked up half and then, and the changes as well.
And you can do that, but if you pick up half of the million, then you got to come up with five hundred thousand out of pocket somewhere.
I mean, is that on the other two also just because of the thickness of the concrete being the county road coming in versus?
Yeah, two or three of those, they happen to be on both ends of town, and they were big access roads. Not all of these are. They access something, but they're not going to be extra heavy paving.
No.
Most of them.
Think it's four, six inches or six inches.
Just, just an aside, but it kind of puts, puts it all into context if you want.
Yeah, this, this by far, I know when somebody called today wanting to know about this by far is just the informational stage so that everyone has an idea, and this is the high end. And this is the same way of the approach when we did West and that, when we came up with the high-end numbers and then brought them down to a reasonable, where is, you know, who, the gutters, who pays for that, who pays for abrins and curbs and driveways and things of that nature too, which is what, some of this has actually increased in price is because of some individuals' driveways. So when the engineer looked at them, he said, "No, this has got to be built up. This is not correct. This has got to be taken care of." So some of the, the blocks are higher per linear foot because of that. So.
One other comment. The engineers are apparently real proud of their new drone.
Yeah.
They must have overflowed all these properties and taken a picture. As far as I'm concerned, the plat map that shows the streets and the lot numbers and the measurements tells people a lot more than this, "What the devil is that? A picture of?"
Yeah, I actually could have just left those pictures alone.
The maps would be much more useful to everybody if they would put out a map and show what they're really talking about.
If you look at the, just look aside to the, the second part of the map, and like I said, these maps are, for lack of better words, I think Bruce is right on.
They're not maps at all.
Yeah, they're pictures. But what's more important is if you look on the left side, some of the estimated quantities, and you follow along, is kind of where you see, especially at the bottom, when you're starting to talk about engineering design costs, sixteen percent, contingencies at ten percent. So they, they'll bid out and they'll take a look at this, but they estimate it's going to cost a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty thousand, depending on what block it is or where it's going to go. Our experience is they come in and spend like clockwork at about a hundred thousand dollars a block. That's just what it costs to do it regardless. I mean, and that's having probably a local that we know, I mean, probably being the low bidder, probably wanting to get it. So they'd be open to all bids, but you'll see that's the lowest bid. We'll get it and we'll go from there. So it's not necessarily etching the stone that that's what's going to cost. And I think these prices are very, very high. So.
Rather than burn three hours of your meeting, although you certainly can discuss however much you want, this is almost big enough to warrant a special meeting, let the property owners come and everybody talk about this.
Correct.
Whatever you guys want to do.
Right.
You don't have to do anything certain tonight.
If somebody wants to.
Get some preliminary thoughts of, you know, however long you're willing to take.
Right.
But you can't really get through this much volume of questions in, in a regular meeting efficiently.
Why don't you ask, certainly ask if it's, I mean, you can do whatever you want.
If you want to see how it could be worse, I spent most of the day reading seven hundred and fifty pages of concrete documents for the bridge over the Nioburra River.
That's what I heard.
For some suppliers. Forty-four million dollars for three-quarters of a mile seems kind of pricey to me. Little bit. It's a different world up there when you get into the big boys.
Does anyone wish to speak about the gap paving?
I have one question.
Sure.
You'd mentioned, or Mike had mentioned that you'd requested this here. I just wonder, what's the motivation for trying to do the gap paving, especially when you know you've got a lot of people that are for it? What's the motivation for?
I, I think, you know, and let me just help them out, and then they can answer themselves. But I think from what my understanding was, every year, I don't care who it is that comes to the meeting, even on the one and six-year plans, which everybody kind of makes a joke out of them and says, "Well, you're just doing this for that reason," you should always, every year, be looking at how to improve the street infrastructure from either the dirt to overcoat to top coat to concrete. Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but I think it should be at least addressed every year, and then that council makes the decision whatever the way they want to. I think we've been actually lax over the years, and I've talked to several, that we don't bring it up every year like it should be. You know, we sometimes go a couple of years and let it go because the heat was too much and stuff like that, which I get, but we should at least discuss it every year.
I could see that there's some places that Mike needed it, there's drainage problems, something like that. But been the council's policy over the last forty-plus years at Idaho, that if people did not want it in that district, the council wouldn't do it. So, I mean, knowing how many people here are probably, they're not a guess, because it would have cost twenty to thirty to a hundred and some thousand dollars to do it. It's just not worth it to them.
Well, and I, sorry, and then March thirteenth, which I'm not arguing. I'm not saying we should do it at all. I don't care. I could go live a nice life and never have them done. But March thirteenth exposed a lot of issues with that kind of thinking because we saw some roads that probably because of drainage should have been taken care of.
Yeah, only so one. That's where the main flood came down.
That's probably not even the one I'm thinking of, Cal.
The one, what was it? Second, Northern Highway forty.
Woodland was a bad one.
Yeah.
You know, Fifth Street was a bad one.
I mean, storm service would have taken care of that. Would have ruined the street. The fragmented green concrete would have been there.
No, I mean, that's.
Anyway, it's, it's just something that this council probably isn't aware of, that they've spent policy the last, I'd say forty-plus years. And then I just wanted a reason why they were wanting to make pursuit of it, is they know they're going to catch up.
And then back, back to the flooding issue, though. There was no storm drain on Fourth Street in part of the two blocks north.
Oh, I know. Horrible.
I don't know how it's going to help sort up north and. I don't know how it's gonna help sort of north and.
That's all been looked at by the engineer. No, and you're right. I mean, that was, there is no storm drainage.
Yeah.
And that was not good. But I, I mean, obviously, that's just one area. I mean, I, I, the whole area, you have the south end of town too, where you have storm drainage, and they paved the roads, and all the culverts have been crushed over the last, uh, twenty-five to thirty to thirty-five years. And, um, so like I said, we can go on and on, but I'm just telling you, those are the kinda things that I'm looking at. And I said, by the way, I said, "I'm the messenger, I'm only bringing back the information, the engineer's the one that works for us." This is just like data. So, you're absorbing data, and what happens from there is, uh, between the council and the public. And I'm fine either way.
Mike, I just wanna clarify, you kinda gave average of numbers. So, I'm going with roughly eighty-five thousand to that hundred and thirty-five thousand per road. So, if you averaged that out, you said a hundred thousand dollars over paving.
That's about right.
So, everybody in here on gravel, that, that includes gap paving, they're looking at twenty-five thousand dollars personally.
Easily.
A piece.
Easily.
Approximately, yes.
No, that's good data. I mean, easily, I mean, in fact, it's more like.
So, they know it's not twenty-five thousand for the entire road to get paved, it's twenty-five thousand for each one.
Yeah, for each property.
Yeah, depending on your linear footage, some may absorb, but say if you own half the block on those gap paving, and most of them do because they come to the alley, then, uh, say you figure twenty-five, 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 there's your hundred thousand dollars where you're coming up with. Some people do have like a sixty-foot lot, which changes their dimensions, kinda like on West Street, I had them all over the place. But yeah, on an average, if you own half the block, which these East West do, um, and I, and I would even go so far to say it's more like twenty-seven to thirty thousand, based on the high numbers.
We just get to talking so fast, and I just wanted to clarify that.
Nope, that's, good data.
Good.
Talking about the gap paving, and you're talking from one paved area to another paved area, is Fourth Street getting thrown in there to make the possible fourplex more attractive to get the grant? Is that why that's getting thrown in? Cause it's my understanding that just about everybody that lives on Fourth Street likes it the way it is.
Are they going for the grant question?
Sure.
When I wrote it? No, the, uh, grant is not contingent upon that street being paved. Um, the reason that that site was selected for the project is because that is kinda where the new development for Plankview is going, and it was, was a natural fit for us, and our developer liked the site. So, it, it does not matter that it's gonna be on gravel.
I've never heard about weather paving. It's always, the reason it always gets put on your asking, cause Fourth, I think Mike Napperstak said this better than I can, because it was a district, it will always be brought up. What happens is always gonna be, um, a discussion between the council and those on Fourth Street. But, you know, it is a district.
It's never gonna go away. Every year, we're gonna have to go through coming and saying that we don't want that road paved.
Or the year that we decide to skip and I don't want the headache, or I mean, I don't know. I mean, usually every year is when it happens. I mean, it should happen every year, the discussion, cause people change. Houses change.
But if it's the same people living here, and you already know that we don't want it, why does it have to be up for discussion again?
I know a couple that do, but, you know.
Maybe that's one out of that whole street though.
Yeah.
So, I don't understand why it has to keep coming up.
There are people without, and, and you're not one of them, you're, you've been very straightforward, so that's okay, that's good. I like when I hear things that are straightforward, good or bad. But there are a couple others on the street that, uh, uh, come, because they don't wanna be the bad guy, come into my office and specifically say they're okay with it now. And I, and I wonder where that come from, so. And I'm not saying it's okay, I mean, just, but they said, "Well, we kinda wished it was done when it was done the last time because of the cost." So.
But that's one person, right? That's one person out of all of us that live there?
Just came into his office.
Yeah, the, the office. I mean, I'm just looking at, and the district was passed by seventy-five percent. So, to become a district.
We all know how that went down. I don't think we really wanna discuss how it became a district.
I don't know, okay. I mean, I mean, it went down exactly the way it was supposed to go down.
None of us knew about, none of us knew about it on our street.
I don't know how.
All we did was put it in the paper, didn't make any phone calls or send letters out. We don't wanna go back and discuss that again.
Yeah, cause I think.
It was a very poor situation. You're right, you did everything that you were legally able to do, but didn't get, but not common courtesy. You drive by there and knew exactly what your intentions were. Put the ad in the paper hoping we didn't see it, and because we weren't at the council meeting, we didn't even know about it. Now, you're trying to stick us with this cost for the road, and we didn't even want the district to begin with. And I'm not the only one sitting in that boat. My Montgomerys are the same way.
And I know about the Montgomerys too, so.
David, did you have something?
Well, I just wanted to say, so, if we get fifty percent and fifty percent, that means it doesn't pass? Or what, what's up with the percentage thing?
No.
Seventy-five percent, and then you pass it?
If you have an area that is not a gap paving area, if the city just goes out and says, "Here's a street, we wanna pave it," and it's not connecting other paving, then the city passes a district, and the property owners have the right to object. And if more than fifty percent object, then that kills it for that year, and they can't do it for another twelve months. They can try again, but it kills it for that year. It means you cannot go forward. Uh, but I think that, and I have not looked at all of these, and I'm not saying I know or think they all qualify. The engineers wrote up their little report here and gave us pictures that you can't quite make sense of, and I didn't go through a map yet. But, you know, if it qualifies as gap paving, then that objection process goes away. And there's not much, now, everybody's entitled to go get their own legal opinion, but there's not much, if anything, that the property owners can do to stop it. They can still argue about how much is fair, how much are we benefited? Maybe we're not benefited to the full cost, and the city oughta stand some of it. That's more of a persuasion thing than it is a win the battle. But that's what the fifty percent is about. It's, it's an objection right when it's not gap paving.
Okay. So, I, I don't think it's fair that you get to tell me that I, I have to spend thirty thousand dollars, maybe that's not fair, either way you look at it.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
I have kept to the conclusion of my life, cause I'm almost old, that all problems come down to money. It doesn't make any difference what it is. I can remember growing up, we had a grid for hopscotch in my, uh, on our street that stayed there, whether it was, it had two inches of rain, would not have taken away, cause it was in that dirt. And it got paved over and made me sad. So, you know, do you have nostalgia? Do you live in the country? Do you like it the way it is, or do you spend the money and make progress? That's the real issue, and, and that's a hard one, cause it still comes down to money.
It does.
Yep.
I, I would just say that we have probably bigger issues in this town versus, I mean, trying to pave the road and then increase our property. We, we need a, we need something that's gonna draw people here, cause it's, I mean, it's dying.
And does the paving of a road increase the property value of the house on the road?
Useful.
So, my twenty-five thousand dollar house is gonna be increased by thirty thousand dollars if I were to try to resell it, because I spent thirty thousand dollars on the road.
Well, of course, that's probably an exaggeration, but it's gonna increase some. I mean, people are gonna pay more for a house on a paved road than they are for a house on a gravel road.
So, I paid twenty-five thousand.
But it's, you know, it's kinda like remodeling your kitchen. If you spend forty thousand dollars, does that add forty thousand dollars to the value of the house? Eh, probably not. Might add twenty, eh, but it adds something. And there's benefit to the property, and that's what the assessment is justified because of. There's some benefit to the property.
Yes.
Can I just say that probably most of the people that are in this room, when they bought their house, it was, you know, it's the way it is now.
Right.
And we were happy with what we had, just to buy. We didn't buy it because it was a dirt road. We didn't buy it because it was concrete. We're happy with what we had.
I guess for me, though, part of the appeal was that it was kinda partly in the country and partly in town, and, and I like having the gravel road. It keeps the traffic down a little bit. I, I don't know, that's.
I'd just say, like, the one on the south side of the hospital, to me, it should've been paved fifty years ago when they built the hospital, but that's just my opinion. I wasn't even born then.
When you, when you do the snow removal, Mr. Kirk, listen to me. Remove all the snow. Do you like those dirt roads? Does it make you interested?
It sucks.
So, then do you get complaints from those people? Think you did a terrible job doing those dirt roads?
Sure.
How about the Senate one? Do you get his name from where I said that?
I just made it by the side.
You never do it right, you know.
So, a house on the street south of the hospital wasn't paved fifty years ago?
You'd have to ask the council at that time.
That policy Cal was talking about, I think that's one, sitting on the hospital, I don't know. I really don't. This whole thing was probably brought up. Yeah, it prob, that's my guess.
Yeah.
You know, I, I think you have an ambulance go on that road. I think it's terrible to have that road there. They don't use it, but I think to have that dirt road there, um, should've been done. I, I mean, I have a hard time believing it wasn't done many, many years ago, but o- once again, I mean, I know that Brian wants to move on. We should have a special meeting, but I do wanna, I do wanna say this in general. I took it the last time, and it hurt a little bit, because I do go home, I do have feelings. This isn't my call. I didn't really have anything to do with anything. I see where the paving has to go based on the one and six. Fourth Street was on the one and six longer before I was even city administrator. It's been there a long time, different sections of it, you know, but it has always been there. Fifth Street's always been there. Seventh Street's always been there. These are just different roads. If they choose, and the council chooses not to do it, but when I bring it up, ultimately in my office, I seem to get, and I don't mind it, but I get the heat. I get the yelling and the screaming at, and I'm not the one paving. If none of these are passed, I'm fine. I go on to the next day, and I'm just as happy as a clam. Fourth Street's still gonna be Fourth Street. I'll still drive and enjoy my drive going up it. So, I look at it from a different angle. I look at the streets that are there, get the Miller and Associates, the engineers to come in, and give you the data to show you that it is earth-shatteringly horrible in price. But it is what it is. It's not gonna change.
Yeah, I, I think that her question was, why do we talk about it? Is it a directive as a city administrator, as a municipality, that you have pavement, that you have improvement? Where does the direction come that says, "Yeah, you have to talk about it every year"?
It's a direction from the state when they give you their road allocation money.
Okay.
They require.
Yes.
Pick a number. How much is the road allocation money roughly?
Hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and fifty bucks or something like that.
If you want, the state's hundred and sixty thousand. Every year, you keep a one and six-year road plan on the books. And every year, you have to go over it and check the boxes and say, "We wanna keep this, we wanna don't keep that, we're gonna change it, we're gonna do whatever we do." And then you adopt a one and six-year road plan. So, it comes and gets thrown in your face every year. Think about what you're doing to improve your streets, and that's why it keeps coming up, if you will. That, and if you never improve any streets, you're all driving mud roads all over town.
Always, and the one and six-year plan, I mean, every year, it seems like I remember, and it's been less now since we paved a couple of streets, but every year, there was always somebody, and I'm Brian, I'm not gonna pick on you, but I will, that will always come and say, "Why do you even have a one and six-year plan if you never pave roads? Plankview never paves roads, and it's awful."
The one that Cal was talking about, the bus barn, the Woodland, that was on the one and six-year plan for over thirty years. And Brooke Curtis, myself, and Tim Kugler brought it up to the council at the time, says, "It's been on the one and six-year plan for thirty years, cause it's the bus coming from the bus barn to the schools." So, their solution was, they took it off, and it's never been back on since, and now you see what the rain did to it, so.
This is the, it's still at the city council no matter what happens here. They can pass this on the gap payment, and then you, the details, they're gonna go back to how much the person pays. That's the way this gap.
If it passed, yeah, then they would find the equitable amount, you know, to be fair.
Is that majority, or is it everybody that passes?
Three quarters, three quarters, three out of four, yeah. But I think, it sounds like the consensus is either later on in July or August, we'll have a special meeting with just this and invite you back, and we'll publicize it. And that way, it won't be just a regular meeting, it'll be a special night with just this item on the.
And I will bring maps instead of pictures.
Some decent maps would.
If that's agreeable to everybody.
Lots and blocks and footages would be helpful.
Number thirteen, discussion, action, RDBG and IRP programs. Let's back to Susan.
I asked Mike to put the IRP on the agenda, um, it's been a while. So, refreshing memory, we applied for a half million dollar revolving loan fund from the, from the USDA, federal government. We were one of nine selected last year for that, first city ever. Um, but it comes with a hundred thousand dollar match. And so, that's where Mike and I have been kinda like, and Courtney, we've talked a little bit, where's that gonna come from? Um, so, the USDA has been ready to close on this loan for six months.
Probably.
Starting to wonder, you know, like, hey, what are you guys gonna do? So, basically, I just need you guys to decide, do we want it? Do we not want it? Um, when I wrote it, we had a number of, uh, projects that would've gone towards looking at DTR. That's coming up, that'll be the new facades and everything, and for those that have done their facades, this'll be the interior of the building, bringing everything inside up to code, plumbing, electrical flooring. Um, that DTR money is four hundred thousand dollars. Only a certain percentage is gonna go to every business owner that wants to do a project. If there's additional money that they need to do a project, the IRP would be a good fit for something like that. The IRP could also fit, like, we're looking at this fourplex project, we had to go out and get an investor for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand. Could've done it with IRP. Um, so, there's a number of things we could've used it for, but it has, it has a broad range of use for it, but it does have that huge match. And, um, part of the thing with USDA funds, as we found with the RDBG, you know, we got that grant to do business loans with, there's an incredible amount of paperwork with it, and it turns a lot of people off.
And who'd be the one managing that?
And it is to a loan, right? This is not four hundred thousand dollars of free money. It has to be paid back.
This is a revolving loan fund, so there, you'll be interest-only payments on this for the loans that you make. So, even though you're awarded four hundred thousand, and then with the city's amount to be half a million, even though you're awarded that, you're only gonna pay interest on what you lend out. So, let's say you only lend out a hundred thousand dollars in two years. That's the interest you'll be paying on that. Deferred for the first three years, paying on that at one percent for thirty years. That's the rate on that. Um, the goal, obviously, is to lend all of that money out within five years, and then you're paying a one percent interest on that for thirty years until it's paid off. The purpose of the revolving loan fund then is that you're charging an interest rate to the people who are borrowing that will cover that. And NINED is gonna be the one that manages this. That's that sample agreement that we kinda talked about. I don't know, it's been seven, eight months, yeah. So, NINED would be your program administrator, uh, to handle the IRP funds. But the biggest thing about it is, one, there's a lot of paperwork that goes along with it. Are you basically just buying down a bank's risk, maybe? And do you have the funding, or do you wanna come up with it? So, we just need a yes or no from you, so I can get back to the USDA, say they stop calling, and, or we start moving forward.
And just keep in mind, we don't have the hundred thousand.
We talked about this, Cal.
One of the things, and like I said, it's, it's really, uh, project-based, but I think Bruce alluded to this, uh, a couple months ago, and I'm jogging his memory here. If you were to, um, take on this hundred thousand and loan from the bank, to have it in the bank for that reason, I think it's imperative that you sit there, and I talked to, uh, folks out in Scotts Bluff that were really LBA forty specialists. You could use LBA forty funds as the payment on that hundred thousand that you have in match until you get that money coming back in. But for a hundred thousand dollar loan, you know, every quarter, you're gonna be taking out whatever that money is, ten, fifteen thousand or?
It depends on, I mean, you don't do anything until you make a loan. You know, if we don't make a loan for two years, there's no payment going out the door.
Right.
Um, if you do make a loan, you still have three years before you have to make that first interest payment. Um, so, you have some time for the, the loan to revolve and start, so you have some time to, so you're not having to pull money from other places to do that. That's the purpose of it. Um, I think if you were just gonna pull all future payments out of LBA forty, the LBA forty board would not be happy with that, nor would I, because it just stops economic development. We only get thirty-eight thousand a year from that fund.
But, but the only thing about the LBA forty is the LBA forty committee is not in charge of that. That would be a council, you know, decision. That's your money, uh, and that can be used. And I'm not saying you have to use it all, but the LBA forty committee has no say over that money. The council does. So, if you wanted to use it for a hundred thousand to help Susan on these big loans, I think it's the only way you're gonna make this work, cause there's no other way to get a hundred thousand. If you want it, and once again, Susan said before, if you don't want it, make a decision and just be.
Yeah, it's just maybe yes or no. I mean, honestly, at this point.
Is the loans for?
Is the loans for future businesses and present ones?
Existence, future, um, you know, let's say we decide we wanna do an industrial business park and, you know, or get some land that has the rail. We've had, we've had a lot of in- interest in land surrounding the rail because that's what people want, you know, could we purchase that? Yes, I mean, there's a number of things you could do with it, but again, it's a double-edged sword, it's good and bad, I mean.
I think since we don't have the funds, I guess, not for soon anymore.
Do we, I'd like a motion just to have it on the record that we're gonna, you know.
Decline?
Decline, yes.
Okay. I see the RDBG's on here too, uh, I do wanna keep that.
That's.
I don't know why it's on here, but we need that.
It's still as part of the whole package deal to talk about it just in general, but IRP is the main one.
Right.
I'd make a motion then to decline the IRP program.
Second?
Second.
Second, uh.
Thank you.
Well, we gotta vote first. I'll vote, uh, yes to decline. Pam?
Aye.
Uh, Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Number fourteen, discussion, action, updates to Keno grant application process, which was Mike, Bob and Julie.
I wanna thank Bob and Julie, like I said, I just, just for looking it over and making sure that they understood it. Well, a couple of things that were brought up at the last meeting and you see by number fourteen, the draft document. You really do, if you're gonna talk about operating, have a definition of operating and what that means as far as operational costs. And I, and I thought this one was just pretty simplified, it's generic, I didn't make it up, it came from another document talking about what operating means. Everything else still remains the same, and I think Bob, we're used to okay with a thousand, you had some thinking of two thousand, but, uh. And that doesn't mean that the Keno grants would be just a thousand if the city council should choose otherwise to, for a project that may be, um, relevant. I mean, whatever that might be. But this will kind of alleviate the, uh, asking for five thousand dollars that we've gotten into every single quarter, uh, except this quarter. I didn't see any Keno applications in the file or in the, the pack, or package, so, package. So, I, I think you see what it is, uh, most of it, we said the last month, Bob, and save if I'm not correct, but the, the language is already written even in the original. That if you just follow the language of what it is and then putting these two additional, uh, comments on here, um, you can continue on like normal.
Are you intending by that language to make the thousand the maximum? Then it says more than a thousand, we'll need a special application, what does that mean?
No, special application implemented by the city or city council. For example, if, if the Keno grants can be used for, God forbid, I didn't say this and Bruce, uh, Yostin, don't kill me, but I know of a town that bought their, um, police car.
You mean for municipal purposes?
Municipal, so if you wanna change that word to municipal.
Well, or implemented by the city council for municipal purposes, you could pull down more than a thousand for a city project. But a thousand is gonna be the maximum for anybody else.
Uh, yeah, at least that was the.
Okay.
No, I like that, for the city council.
It'd be well to add that on the end of that sentence to make it clear that nobody gets to use the more than a thousand thing but the city, if that's what you mean.
Yep. Nope, I think that's, uh, appropriate. And for those that have been involved with the, and sure, if you wanna speak to this too, I know that you had some issues with the, talking about Keno. But when we talk about repetitive or recurring costs, and we're also now talking about the thousand dollar maximum, uh, the state, the legislative, legislation behind this. Based these, uh, funds to be used primarily for two purposes. Community betterment, which is a really broad term, but primarily for youth programs and that nature, that's what a lot of people do. That's one purpose, the other purpose was for tax alleviation. And that's another broad term, because what alleviates taxes? Anything we spend for is supposed to alleviate a tax somehow. So that's how the town got by with buying a police squadron car out of Keno funds, because it alleviated the taxes that would've been used from another source. So, uh, we've always been good. Courtney keeps a record of all the things that it's been out, it's been a very benevolent, um, expenditure throughout the years. So I think that this will keep it on a level, as long as Julie and Bob, you agree as a committee?
So we want a motion to change the language then and then lower the maximum?
I think just do it and just amend it, just pass the motion as amended.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to.
Of course. Sure.
Before you do any.
Sure.
I would just like to say that I would like to have a correction to the minutes from last week, or last month's, um, meeting. Keystone Bar has never, ever, in the history of Keno and Plainview, Nebraska, ever, ever asked for a Keno grant. Has never gotten one, has never applied for one, and I would like that stricken from the record.
It's not in the minutes. I didn't put it in the minutes, but.
Well, I felt very, um, I can't even go there. Because it upset me very, very much. Never have I asked for free money from this town. Everything that has been done at Keystone Bar, I have done, I have worked for. Yes, I asked for a loan, I did get a loan to pay for my tables and it will be paid back, but I have never, ever asked for a Keno grant.
I never saw, I always saw was LB eight forty money that you asked for the loan for.
Exactly, but it was mentioned in the last meeting that maybe Keystone Bar shouldn't get a, a Keno grant every year. Never, ever.
And nobody said anything.
No.
Nobody said anything, everybody just left it go. So I don't blame her for being upset.
I am livid, livid. I am biting my tongue right now, but I would just like to make that known, that Keno, Keystone Bar has never, ever, does not plan on asking for free money.
I kinda wish I was there, when you came in, we could've sat down and had a, uh, nice talk.
No, you weren't there, but Courtney and Melissa.
Courtney got it.
Thank you. Bob made the motion second?
I'll second it.
Seconded. Pam?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Julie?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Number fifteen and sixteen, we do together or?
Uh, yeah.
Discussion, action on water sewer rate study and updates to water meter system?
They, they go hand in hand, I think Kirk probably, just from what you said, Randy's gonna be here tomorrow.
He'll be here tomorrow and finish up on the rate study and.
The rate study will reflect, we have to have in the meters, and one thing we said to, and I mentioned to Brian at a, at a staff meeting that we had, as well as to others, uh, including Darren, who was in the other day. It's not a matter of the water meter system as a want, it's now beyond that. It's a, it's a need and we are absolutely losing water meters daily, there, it's, it's an awful situation. And part of it's the technology is just outgrown and the other ones we had are obsolete. Is that a good way to put it, Kirk?
Yes.
We can still.
Besides urs?
We can still get the, uh, the readers, but they're a hundred bucks a piece. And when we get this new system, they will be obsolete then. So I just ordered thirty of them, so we got three thousand dollars right there wrapped up in the newer, set, uh, electronic reader and two years, well, not a read that, so it's.
So just so that, there's a good number of crowd of citizens in here, so your water rates unfortunately will be going up because we have to get new meters, because it's not reading correctly. And like you said, the software will be obsolete in two years, so.
Correct.
So unfortunately.
But, and, you know, they won't be paying for the meters.
No.
But, yeah.
But the rates will probably be going up.
Then, make, you know, no, I'm sure they will, water and sewer will probably both, but we don't know how much yet, so.
I think we should wait to comment on that until the rates.
No, I'm, I'm just letting people know that in a couple of years, the water and sewer rates probably.
System we got now is gonna be obsolete in, I think it looks like twenty, twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Two years.
Two years.
So, yeah, that makes, uh, years and, we're gonna do a job here of the, you know, so, but, so, yeah, you gotta get all this software and, you know, bang.
Will you be able to provide, um, people with information from the rate study by next month?
Yeah, we'll, uh, we should know more tomorrow, like, and say, we'll put it on the agenda again, so.
Yeah, because we just put it on the agenda for next month, so people know.
That's always just a discussion.
Yeah. Number seventeen, discussion, budget hearing or workshops for twenty nineteen and twenty twenty.
Yeah, I'm glad you included the workshops, you know, probably the thing that I believe, uh, for the citizens is to participate, and I know sometimes they don't, but, uh, budget's coming up. This is the time to really say what you wanna say, it guides and dictates the entire year. They'll be coming out in August, I need you guys to just be thinking about dates in August, I'd like to have at least three.
Yeah. Traditionally, we have two to four workshops and the fiscal year starts on October first. So, between now and October first, we have to, well, we actually pass it at the September meeting, so, yeah.
You will have a draft budget in the August deal along with, you know, we're talking about that's including the evaluation scores and things like that. Typically, we look at each department and then we'll go into labor and personnel on one of the budget meetings separately, but I, I, at least three in, uh, August and one or two, one for sure, obviously in September.
Okay. Number eighteen, city attorney comments.
The only thing I've got that's not otherwise on the agenda is we did get those deeds circulated to the folks with the little house south of the city shop. And first they signed them and didn't have them notarized, so then I re copied them and reprinted them and sent them back to them again, and then they signed them again, and then we paid them. So I think that's, the deeds are down in Pierce, right, or the deed is down in Pierce right now being recorded.
And it was notarized, eh?
The final one.
Final one, okay.
So that, that's the only other thing I have.
Okay. Council comments, Bob?
I've got nothing.
Julie?
No.
Pam? I'd just like to thank everybody for coming, and number twenty, the public comments, does Tricia still wanna speak, or she's still here?
Ready to come up?
If you would like to, if you would like to, or stand up.
It'd probably be better that way.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah. Is it three or five?
Whatever you decide.
Would you like three minutes or five minutes? I haven't, I have my.
Fifteen.
Five it is.
Thank you. It'll probably take like nine, not even, we'll just go with it. I actually have some questions about the unlicensed vehicle things from last month. Are we all ready?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just remember, I wasn't here unfortunately.
I know.
I'm sorry, I had to.
I watched it on YouTube.
Yeah.
Uh, what's, what's the purpose of the report with names and it's not gonna be in the paper, right?
No.
So what's the purpose of the report?
So we know which ones are being done and which ones aren't.
So, you know.
To hold people accountable. We've, from when I started last year till now, the main complaint that I've gotten is when we look out our window, or if we think about selling our property. There's unlicensed vehicles directly across from it. We've had ordinances for years about these.
What is the ordinance for unlicensed vehicles? I couldn't find it, I looked.
There are three or four of them and you'd have to take a little time and look through the code book, but it's in there.
It's jumbled on the internet, we need to fix that.
Well, don't look on the internet.
I'll get you a copy.
Thank you, I would appreciate that.
You can give you a paper copy.
Okay.
There are actually two or three and it's kind of complicated, you need to read them all. But they can be cited for unlicensed, they can be cited for inoperable, they can be cited for parked in the street for too long. They can be cited for parked on public property if they're not operable. And there's a whole raft of things that can be used to clean up vehicles that are just making a junkyard out of a residential neighborhood. And that's why they're there.
Who's responsible for citing?
Hmm?
Who's responsible for citing?
The police department, the police department.
The police department, okay. How many years of experience in law enforcement does the council have?
I have zero.
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 Of course, that has no relevance to anything.
It, it has some relevance, actually.
What do you think the relevance is?
Bruce, do you mind? How many years of experience do you have in law enforcement? Yes, please, if you would.
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight years in law enforcement. That's a lot longer than I've been alive, Bruce. Just saying. Okay, I ju- I just, I really think that you guys need to really look at the fact that you're not law enforcement. You know. Do we though, because I watched the last meeting, I mean.
This has nothing to do with law enforcement, it's a city ordinance.
But it has everything to do with law enforcement.
Tricia, what you don't understand, what you don't understand is we passed this ordinance in January as a city council.
Did the whole council get to vote on it?
Yes.
There was a two, one, one vote.
Who was the one?
They voted aye, I voted nay, she abstained because her husband is the chief.
Okay, so, and then we've determined since then that Pam's not allowed to vote.
Well, not when it's in direct regards to her husband, because that's conflict of interest.
There's a lot of conflicts of interest, it's a very small town.
That's a big one.
This is, this is a conflict of interest.
It's about as good as it gets, yeah.
Right, but who determines what's a conflict of interest?
I do.
The city attorney?
And if you'd like to talk to somebody about it, you're welcome to write me a letter or something like that.
A letter? How about an email?
I'd love to get a letter from you.
Okay, I'm gonna put that in my notes.
Because we're not gonna have the city take legal advice from you, you can be pretty sure about that.
I didn't ask anyone to take legal advice from me.
Well, you're giving them legal advice, but that could come to an end.
I don't think I gave anyone legal advice.
Sure.
I mean, I, I'm just asking questions, because this isn't making sense, I, if it's not gonna be published in the paper.
The chief objected on a privacy basis.
Right.
To putting people's names in the paper. So the proposal was made that if he gave the stuff just to the city council, and if it's not discussed in detail at a meeting, then perhaps it doesn't have to be made public. If it's discussed in any detail at a meeting, then the public and the news media are entitled to full copies of all the stuff. But so long as it's just a report that's used internally for management of the police department, perhaps it doesn't need to be distributed to the public. And that's the way it stands tonight, I take it.
So it's just for city record, then basically is what we're saying that this report is for, it's just for you guys? Just city record?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Oh, what else, someone must've done here, I guess, uh. Oh, yep, this is a good one, okay, so, I just wanna, because it really bothered me, any employees in an organization that failed to comply with the boss's instructions would be remanded or fired. Do we remember that, anyone? Okay, as city council members, you are mostly elected, some of you have been appointed. Are we clear on who your boss is?
The citizens of this community.
Thank you, Brian. That's it, thank you.
Thank you for your time, anyone else?
I have just more questions, am I allowed to do that?
Sure, you got five minutes, you can close for me.
If I have to, can I, I just have a couple of questions.
Okay, five minutes.
We are gonna set another meeting to discuss the gap payment, is that correct?
Yes.
How is everybody going to get notified? Because even the people on my own street didn't know you guys were discussing gap payments.
I will call, I will call everyone that is listed on these personally and let you know when the meeting is.
So you have a personal phone call?
You have my word on that.
Thank you.
And then it will also be posted in the paper or three, please?
It will also be posted around town and in the paper and on the website and on Facebook page.
Okay, because some people don't even get the flight in paper.
I understand that.
I mean, okay, so I'm affected, I'm assuming gap payment on my one street. Now, is Fourth Street going to be talked about on this meeting?
It's part of it.
The other streets are going to be discussed.
Just like the, the road between the schools, I mean, I mean, I don't see probably that going very far, but, you know, at least it's on the discussion.
So this will be mine once a year? I won't have to worry?
No, no, that's separate, this'll be a special meeting.
Okay, but we only have to discuss it, you said one and the six plan, and it's gotta come up once a year that you have documentation that we discuss the plan to get your funds.
Right.
So this meeting doesn't count for that?
No.
Well, if you're asking the city council to promise that they'll only discuss the street improvements once a year, that's probably not gonna happen.
Okay, that's what I'm asking, because that's what he makes it sound like, that it's only coming up. Okay, that's what I'm asking, because that's what he makes it sound like, that it's only coming up once a year, because it has to whenever you guys need your funds.
Right.
They can bring it up anytime they wish, they just have to bring it up once a year to get the state money.
So how are we going to be notified when this comes up, comes again, we're going to get phone calls?
The one in six year or the special meetings?
Before this would ever go to the next step, I mean, this, and it's a good deal, like tonight, tonight's was not listed to forego any secretive type thing. It was simply an FYI, here it is, I haven't even looked at the legal descriptions of each land. I just got the name from the county site to give kind of the council what the approximate cost was. Each homeowner will get a certified mail. If that process goes that far, you'll get a certified mail. As far as the special meeting, Courtney discussed, you know, that part of it, just we'll phone call and tell everybody to make sure you're here to discuss it. The legal part of it, when it comes time to take a look at it, what Bruce was discussing later on down the road, you would get certified mail in return of what's going on.
That wasn't required, when you guys sent us a list for four street, certified letters?
Yeah, and I've got them all.
I never signed for a letter.
I've still got them.
I'm going to come down and get that from you, because it could have been a specific, I don't remember ever getting a certified letter.
I learned a long time ago that even though that was like ages and eons ago, to keep every certified thing I've got, so I got a package full of. In fact, Nortah Johnson, to be honest, was the last one I can remember that didn't get it, so.
And I believe that three places were required to post, is it post office, news office and city office?
No, but that's the recognized government.
Or recommended, correct.
That's just for a meeting.
Right, but well, also, like she said, she'll call everybody and we'll have it in the paper and on the website.
That would be great if we got a phone call.
We'll make sure that the special meeting, so everybody knows.
This is just a small thing, but on that list where everybody's name is and what they, oh, is it? Wouldn't it be possible to get my name spelled right on there?
I would say, which one are you, I don't even know if I did that right.
That was not me.
I don't know.
You better check to see if I got Alvin spelled right in there.
You did spell Fluky wrong.
Yeah.
No, don't bring up any more names. Okay, yeah, that's okay.
If it goes to the level of really doing anything, the engineers have to go through the real estate record and certify the footages.
They got to go to county and they, yeah, they don't even agree with the footage.
With the full owners and the footages and the whole nine yards. I take it, these estimates and footages are your estimates and footage?
Yeah, I mean, just like we did the first time, these are just from the engineer and just taking the linear footage off the county website. I did spell it wrong, yes, I did.
Same on you.
I got it still right. You're one of them with an O.
What's that?
You're with one of them with an O, yes, oh?
Oh, it's E N, S E N.
I'll spell it for you, don't worry about it.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
I think that it should be the responsibility of the citizens to, if they have something going on with the city, that they should ask questions and they should read their paper and they should look at the city. I mean, I don't, I don't think we can call everybody for everything that goes on.
No, is it something that requires you to pay thirty to forty thousand dollars instead, or something that I think would justify it from somewhere?
It's, it's still, let me just, let me rephrase that, you know, and Rachel's right too, I mean, I, I, it is a courtesy. Is it required? No. But should it be a courtesy in a small town? Yes. You know, and if I learned anything from the first time around, first, the first time around, we did these things in the district, which were all done correctly legally, but it wasn't done probably correctly the way I would have, if I had to go back and do it again. And I think I even told you that, that I didn't like the way it came out, I wished I would have done things different. But we hadn't paved the road prior to that for almost ten to fifteen years, and when Bruce was involved with that one, along the front side of the assisted living and the cul-de-sacs. Otherwise, we hadn't, there was no roads ever done, that was the complaint, so we looked at it, so, yes. If I had to do it again, would I have done it differently? Yes. So I, you know, I learned from that.
At that time, I think I'd been on the council for ten years and we had never talked about paving. We had talked about we need to do it, but we had never gone and asked anybody to do anything, so it was all pretty. People weren't watching for it.
Right.
And it snuck up on them. But I still think more people need to attend meetings, not just when it's something that's going to impact you negatively. I think you need to be here when it's going to impact you positively and you need to take a more active responsibility in doing good things for the town.
Hey, I got a question, I'm going to, I got dirt roads everywhere's direction from me.
You do.
Oh, you do, yeah.
So, now, that would have to be formed in a district to ever pave them?
On yours, yes, because there's no.
Well, no, that's not necessarily true, not saying I would do that, but if you want to connect two ends of a pavement, you can connect two ends of a pavement, so I could go like north of you, all the way to Ninth Street. I think it goes that way, no, all the way.
It stops at Seventh.
And then all the way over to wherever the, the street gets paved to the west of you.
I'd be, west would be the closest.
West would be the closest, east you wouldn't have to worry about, so you, I don't know, I mean, whether that's a half gap or what.
No.
No.
There's no such thing as a half gap.
You would be in a different situation.
Some district, I mean, you could probably vote on that if you're the landowners, would you like that?
Where you're at, particularly north and south. I'm not so sure east and west, north and south, yes.
Yeah, I just wondered, so I'd be aware of it if it ever happened.
Absolutely.
You don't want to come back.
Mike, if you want to pay something, there's some people on Eighth Street that would like to have theirs paved last twenty years or so.
Eighth Street?
No, Seventh Street, Seventh Street.
Yes.
You really want to get me in trouble?
They wanted it paved twenty years ago.
Yeah, they don't now.
They don't? So I'd give you a place to get some paving.
Sure. Anyone else?
I just want to agree with Julie.
Thank you.
You just what?
I want to agree with you, agree with you. I, I think if you're going to be a part of this town, you have to be a whole part of this town, you just can't come and go when it only affects you. Because we are supposed to be the whole town, for the benefit of the town. I think the council works very hard at trying to work for the whole town. And sometimes you have to step on toes, because that's just how life is, and it's not fun. And it's that gosh darn money thing again.
It is.
You didn't have to have money, we could do a lot of things.
Absolutely.
Hundred eleven thousand's a lot, though.
That is an awful lot, wouldn't you bet?
It is, I'm very lot. Yes.
I just have one other. I think that if anybody, not just one person, anybody sitting on the city council, I think that it's only common courtesy to respect your other council members and everyone else employed for your city. I don't think having an attitude and being rude to certain council members or other people is very appropriate or makes you look very inappropriate, so.
You want to give any specifications?
Yes, you.
In regards to what?
I think it was very rude how you talked to Pam and very rude how you talked to Bruce.
For your information, we've been asking Bruce for over a year when Mike Knapperstack was on the city council for some sort of a report. And in January, when the ordinance was passed, he needed to provide that information to us. And he was blatantly disrespectful by saying, no, I'm not doing it. There was some emails back and forth, which I don't think you're fully aware of, that our city attorney gave advice, we followed it, and we're enforcing it.
I'm okay with you enforcing whatever you have to enforce, I'm just saying the way that you speak to people is kind of inappropriate and I don't really think that there was a need for the way that you talk to Pam or him, so.
I'm sorry you feel that way.
Public comments, I'm not to say so.
Definitely, definitely.
Thank you.
I think there, there is frustration on all levels and I get that part, but I've been to many city council meetings and this is not the first council who's requested stuff, and Bruce.
I did it for twelve years when I was on there.
I'm requesting whatever from him, I'm just saying. But you can, you talk to people, I mean, if you're sitting on the council, you need to talk to people with respect.
But you can see the frustration, right?
And I can, I can understand that, but again, you talk to people with respect if you're in that position, in my opinion.
Thank you. Last call for public comments. Going once?
I got something, nothing to do with all this. Um, I forgot to put in my report, we did apply, we're actually applying for on the county level, uh, housing trust funds for disaster-related home damage to the flood. So there's a public hearing on July fifteenth at ten AM during, at the Pierce County politicians' meeting. Um, what's nice about this is there's been about a million dollars earmarked for our district. Um, if you have damage from the flood and you do not have to be in the city limits, this includes rural. Please contact city office near Mike, give us your name, your address. Uh, we'll follow up with you to kind of figure out what that damage is and we'll try to get you in on this application. But, um, we're trying to apply for funding to help people in Osmond Pierce, playing new hater.
Especially if you got black mold, I'm, I'm trying to squeeze blood out of a turnip right now and it's, it's extremely frustrating, but I think we're going to get some, so if you've got some black mold, I know two or three homes down there in the southern area that, that people are gone. They're out of their home just because of that, they don't have the funds, I get it. I'm trying to get some funds and, and we've just put this forth and talked to the district about that, so take advantage of it, you know, as much as you can.
And spread the word, if you know people in rural that were affected by the flooding that we don't know about, let them know that they can call us. We're just trying to get a list of people that we can help so we can get everything on that grant application.
Susan, do you have to have pictures and all of that stuff like you do for the FEMA?
Not right now, we just, we just want your, you know, who got affected, um, you know, a brief description of what hap, you know, what your damage is and so we can apply for the funding, once the grant funding comes through, we'll get through all that.
Because I know earlier, somebody had said you had to have all the pictures, well, by the time people heard that, it was way too late, they'd already.
This is in FEMA money, so it's totally different.
That's why I was asking, because.
Completely different, um, so, yeah, if anybody know, just let us, let them know that they can contact us and we'll kind of get it in. And there's a public hearing then on fifteenth, if anyone wants to go to that to learn more about that grant, um, then we'll, we'll.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all for coming again.